First order of business on the agenda is receipt of the Board of Supervisors meetings for November the 10th. Are there any questions from the supervisors? I'll take that as a no. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is the receipt of the invoice history from October the 20th. Are there any questions from the supervisors?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it. Next up is the receipt of the year-to-date budget report and balance sheet for October 2020. Are there any questions? Take that as a no. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the approval of the 2021 Budget and Fiscal Plan. Please note on your agenda, it was listed as 2020 as opposed to 2021. And for those people in our audience, we go through a budget plan and the book weighs about five pounds. We have several budgetary meetings. The department heads and staff, Craig and Jamie, review the budget. They review it with the supervisors and we make adjustments along the way until we come up with a budget that's then available for the public. And tonight is the discussion on approving the budget. Are there any questions from the supervisors?
I have a comment.
Please go ahead.
Sure, I'd like to propose an adjustment in the budget itself. Last Thursday, December 5th, I believe it was, we had a meeting with the representatives from the community ambler, Community Ambulance Association of Ambler, the business director, the chief of the ambulance squad, and a board member who is the liaison to Lower Gwinnett Township. They approached us with the request to increase our annual contribution to them, given the fact that COVID has put a strain on their expenditures due to trying to keep the staff safe, the driver safe, the patient state safe, increases in PPE, cleaning, staffing adjustments, et cetera. But in the same time, the trips have been reduced, so their revenue has been significantly negatively impacted as well. And they came to us, asking us to increase our annual contribution, which currently stands at $15,000 to $30,000 to help them make up the shortfall that they've been suffering pretty much all of 2020. We have not increased our level since 2008, whereas the other municipalities whom they service, Ambler increased their level in 2017 to $10,000 and Upper Dublin increased their fee in 2018 to $50,000. I think these are unprecedented and extraordinary times. It sounds like they need the money and it sounds like it's due time for us to increase our contribution. So I offer a motion to adjust line item in the general fund for 12.520, increase that line item to $33,896, representing the $30,000 annual contribution and a remainder of a $3,896 payment that is still outstanding from 2020 for their radios.
Craig, when you and I spoke about this, did we adjust, we have to adjust it in this meeting, right?
Yes.
Because the budget was already open for review.
Well, we should adjust it in this meeting. If not, I'd have to come back to you and ask for a recommendation outside of what we already budgeted for. So it would be good if we, if everyone's in favor of it to change it now.
Yeah, okay, that would be good. For those of you in the meeting, Kathy and Tessie are on our EMS Committee, Fire, Ambulance and Police, so they're the most familiar with any adjustments of the budgets in that area. So do I have a motion to approve the increase?
I set forth a motion. We need a second.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you.
I would like to add one thing, maybe for us to consider. As Kathleen pointed out, the impact to the budget of the ambulance group is, I think they, if I'm remembering correctly, something on the order of $100,000. And so this is certainly going to help them, but I think we should even consider maybe going beyond this for a one-time payment to help them out. And I just put that forward for consideration. We don't have to vote on it tonight.
I wanted to follow up and say, what do they need to be fully funded? Because I know that the other surrounding municipalities made a contribution. Where are they at as far as the leftover to be fully funded?
I don't know the answer to that and that wasn't discussed in the meeting. They were pretty, they were pretty certain with the number that they were seeking when they approached Supervisor McNeely and myself, so I just don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I think I can, one of us can follow up there. I just think that it behooves us to make sure that they're fully funded and especially during these difficult times.
Okay, please work with staff, find out what that number is. I'd also be interested in surrounding township's contribution because the ambulance is a multi-municipality association and everybody needs to be included. But I think that's, it's a good idea to find out what additional funds, if they need it, if any. And then we can bring it back to the board and after you make some recommendations. Thank you very much for that. And Kara, before I forget, we had an executive session, contractual matter, and I want to make sure that got into the minutes. Thank you.
Before we move and vote off of the budget, I just wanted to know, and forgive me, I didn't, I went to ask Craig this. Can you tell me the difference between the request for the park and rec department versus what we're budgeting for them?
Well, the request for the rec department is, the expenditures is 595,355. The projected revenues is 445,708. It's a difference of 149,647 that we would be taking out of the fund balance for the rec fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, so now we have two resolutions we have to vote on. First resolution is the budget resolution, budget resolution 2020-22. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution, the tax resolution 2020-23. There is no changes to our tax structure. Taxes will stay the same as they were last year and I don't know how many years in a row that is that they haven't changed, Craig. Do you happen to know the number of years?
In a row, in 20 years, we raised it one time since I've been here. It was somewhere in the 2000.
I think 2002.
2002? Okay.
I think.
So.
I thought it was 14.
Yeah, I thought it was later than that, but I could be wrong, so.
So I'd love to take credit for not raising the taxes, but you know, the staff has done a great job. They keep the budget under control, they watch the budget for us. That's why we have a budget, so we don't go spending money we don't have. And the budget discipline is really good and a lot of credit to keeping our taxes where they are. It belongs to the staff. I mean, the supervisors too, but the staff has the heavy lifting on that. So I just wanted to say thank you to the staff. Do I have a motion to accept the 2020-23 tax resolution?
So moved. A second.
Second. Those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Next up is approval for the allocations of the, for the fund balance. Is Chuck with us today, Craig?
He, yes, he was, yep.
Okay, Chuck, could you explain for everybody our fund balance policy?
Chuck, you're muted if you, I'm asking him to unmute.
Yeah, why don't you go, Craig? I want you to explain to everybody what a fund balance policy is, why we have one, and we put that in, what, four years ago?
Yeah, we put that in a few years ago to protect the township, really. So the general fund does not accumulate too much fund, either too much or too little. So we have a fund balance policy of 25, of a range between 25 and 35% of the general fund, that the general fund does not exceed the expenditures by over 35 or under 25% for the fund balance. So what that means is if the fund balance goes over 35% of the, of the anticipated expenditures, we would reduce the fund. If it goes under 25%, we are required to fund that balance back in, so it exceeds 25%. So in 2019, after the audit was done, we had some excess funding. However, as you know, the audit is done February, March, and we were in, under COVID. So we did not want to move any money from the general fund at that time. We were worried about revenues. As you know, we stopped some projects and we, we were watching all expenditures at that time. Now it comes to December and our revenues were, were okay, were good, I'll say, and we still did not do all the projects. So we have roughly a million dollars in excess on the general fund. So we would like to move that into the allocated funds that were listed, and I will say them now. $100,000 to the rec fund, which Danielle, we just talked about, to try to, you know, recoup some of the money that we're looking to lose next year. So $100,000 in the rec fund, $100,000 in the stormwater fund, $300,000 in the open space fund, and the rest of $500,000 into the capital reserve fund. What the fund balance does is give us, it gives us some leverage in case of a catastrophe, in case of something like, you know, the pandemic that hit. We would have been okay. I know we looked at those numbers, Mark, during the year and how, how many months we would have if we had zero revenue coming in. So it was kind of nice to see that we did have a good funding source if we, if we'd lost all revenue. So, so that's the recommendation, $100,000 to the rec fund, $100,000 to the stormwater, $300,000 to the open space. And the open space would replenish some of the money that we spent on, on the park expansion down at Ingersoll by buying the McCormick piece and the $500,000 into the capital reserve for a rainy day fund.
Right, so I just want to elaborate a little bit on this. So a fund balance policy is looked favorably on the financial markets. So fund balance, fund balance policy allows the markets to look at us in a very transparent way and see how we're, see how we're allocating our resources and that we're not being, that we're being focused, very focused on where the money's going and how we're managing all our money. So it's very transparent when you have a fund balance policy out there. The second thing I want to say is, when COVID hit, I approached the, our financial director, Craig and Jamie, and said, hey, look, I need a model. I need a model, what will happen to our tax revenue under, under several scenarios? And when I say model, what I mean is what would happen if our revenues stopped coming in? What would happen if we only got half of our revenues? What would happen if we got three quarters of our revenue? What would our, what would our account balances look like? And our finance director and Craig and Jamie developed a model that gave us some predictive understanding of what could happen under the different scenarios. So we wound up in a very good situation because so many of the good citizens of, of Lower Gwinnett are, they're professionals. And we did not suffer the same as some of our neighboring townships. So we were very, very lucky and very grateful that the, the model that the staff developed, we, we didn't have to execute any of it because the, the revenues came in, but we had a plan to execute it if we had shortfalls. So I, we didn't really discuss it too much, but it didn't have to be, it's nothing we had to do because everything has worked out really well. But to, managing the finances is one of the key roles of, of the supervisors and, you know, it has turned out really well. So we're, we're grateful to the citizens of Lower Gwinnett and staff for making sure we kept on track. So having said all of that, are there any questions about the allocation of the fund balance from any of the supervisors? Take that as a no. Are there any questions from any member of the audience on this topic?
And anyone could go down and, in the bottom, you have opportunity to raise your hand or wave at me or, I don't see anything, Mr. Gray.
Okay, can I have a motion for the approval of the allocation of the fund balance?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it. Next on the agenda is the pre-tax insurance contribution for employees, correct?
Yes, this is, and I have to give all the credit to Chuck Wilson on this one, that the staff, employees put money into the healthcare contributions with their health insurance. In the past, we have been taking that out after taxes. And when Mr. Wilson came in, well, recently, when, after he was in already, but he was wondering why, or he found out that there is a pre-tax insurance contribution for employees that we could set up. So we're hoping that you guys would agree. This is basically, you know, a little bit of a give back to the employees that the contributions would be a pre-tax contribution and not post-tax for the healthcare contribution.
So. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know there was such a vehicle that we could do that. How did Chuck find it?
I think Chuck had it in his old municipality that he came from. So he, he found it where we can execute, basically, this is basically authorizing the township manager, manager to execute the, the Act 125 premium-only plan. So it's basically.
He was in Tellemenson.
He was in Cowan Township as the finance director.
Before that.
Yeah.
I think it's a great plan and we have to thank him for coming that forward for the employees. And if you need a motion, I'll be happy to make that motion.
Okay.
That'll be the motion.
No, second.
Okay, is any member of the audience have any questions on this? I'll take that as a no.
Not seeing anything, Mr. Gray.
All right, thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Aye.
Next up is any citizen comments, concerns, questions? Is there anything the audience, members of the audience would like to bring up at this
Mark, I would just like to thank the supervisors and Jamie and Neil for reworking the revised ordinance and also bylaws documents. I think there was some confusion as to the difference between an ordinance versus bylaws, which are to be internal, an internal document. So we're very happy that this hopefully will move forward and that we've updated both the ordinance and the bylaws.
Ree, could you introduce yourself and tell us who you are for the record and where you live?
I'm so sorry, yes, of course. Ree Monahan, I, present, I am the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Council. And I reside, obviously, in Lower Gwinnett Township, 920 Plymouth Road.
Okay, very well. Well, thank you very much for the comments. I think, I think Neil is on, I can't see him on the tile, but I think he's here, so.
Yes, Neil and Jamie have been instrumental. They've really been working with me, with us, and so I'm very happy to see this moving forward. Hopefully, it'll be approved by the supervisors. And then we have every revised working document. And the bylaws document, as I understand, is an internal document that we, EAC members can update accordingly as need be for policy issues and structuring of the meetings. So we're very happy with, with the bylaws document revised.
Thank you very much, Ree.
Sure.
Are there any other comments from the audience?
I don't see anything, Mr. Gray.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is building zoning, resolution 2020-24 for the Meyer subdivision up on 1409 Cedar Hill Road. Right?
Ken Amy's on the, on the line here, so.
Oh yeah, can we have Ken, please?
I am here, thank, thank you. Back in 2015, the Board of Supervisors approved a two-lot subdivision for Mr. Mayor and his wife at 1409 Cedar Hill Road. Part of that approval was construction of a trail along the Cedar Hill Road frontage. And Mr. Mayor and the homeowner of the, of the lot where this trail would be installed, both appealed to the Building and Zoning Committee and asked if the township would consider allowing them to pay a fee in lieu for that trail as, as there were no connections available for the trail and they felt the money could be used elsewhere to, to, to better serve the township. Building and Zoning Committee agreed that that would be appropriate. They asked that Mr. Mayor submit an estimate that could be reviewed and approved by the township engineer. He did that and there has been a, a new resolution prepared which would re-record the plan without the requirement for the trail, but would recognize a contribution of $5,320, which represents the value of the trail. And that's the resolution that, that Neil has prepared and is before you this evening.
Do any members of the supervisors have any questions on this?
Yes, I'd like to know a little bit more about how that figure was derived.
Mr. Mayor hired a contractor to go out, look at the site and put together a proposal to construct the sidewalk. And then that proposal was reviewed by Mr. Hirsch. Mr. Hirsch felt that it was, that it was a fair, a fair number and accurately reflected the value of the trail. And on that basis, the Building and Zoning Committee felt that that, that was a number that the township would be willing to take in lieu.
And then the money will go into the general fund? What is, what, what happens to that payment?
Well, I'll let Craig maybe explain. I don't, I don't know exactly what fund it would go into.
That money will, has gone into the capital reserve fund and that will be for future connections. We have one up on Welsh Road that we were simply thinking that this would go into, into that project. However, the, the project went out for bid and the bid to put such trail and connection up on Welsh Road was exceeded what we thought was the project number for, for that connection. So we have tabled that and, and we will be going out to, for another bid in 2021 to see about a connection up there. But, so that would be used for a future connection.
Is this going to prevent us in the future from having a complete trail in that area? Is this going to be a gap, a missing gap going forward? Or is this a situation where the township is not interested in pursuing a trail in this region?
Well, this is an area where, along the entire stretch of Cedar Hill Road, on the, this is on the west side of Cedar Hill Road, there is no trail or sidewalk present along the entire length of Cedar Hill Road from Bethlem Pike to Welsh Road. This would have been the only very, very small stretch of trail located on that side. And that's why the Building and Zoning Subcommittee felt that it would be more appropriate to take the value of that trail construction and apply it somewhere where it would make a more meaningful connection.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Are there any more questions from the supervisors? Okay, are there any questions from members of the audience? I'm going to take that as a no. Can I have a motion for resolution 2020-24?
So moved.
Have a, have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Next is the dedicated easement for Meyer, Mayor at 1409 Cedar Hill Road. And there's two sub-resolutions under there. Mr. Amy, can you explain those for us, please?
Yes, there are two resolutions before you, 2020-25 and 2020-26. 25 is the dedication of the right-of-way of Cedar Hill Road. And this refers to the same subdivision, the same two-lot subdivision, the portion that fronts on Cedar Hill Road. The deed was written to some location within the, what we would consider the ultimate right-of-way. And so the, as part of the subdivision approval, the developer was obligated to dedicate the portion between the legal right-of-way and the ultimate right-of-way to the township. So this is the ordinance which accomplishes that dedication.
Are there any questions to the supervisors?
I'm not saying anything, Mr. Gray.
The audience isn't either, okay. Can I have a motion for 2020-25?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And I have a motion for resolution 2026. And I have a motion for resolution twenty twenty six.
Done, moved.
Yeah, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is the Divid to your contract addendum to the Delaware Valley Health Trust. Greg?
Uh, Mark, we missed one, a resolution, uh, twenty twenty.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right.
Yes.
Uh, too quick here. Resolution twenty twenty seven, uh, twenty twenty dash twenty seven, extension of the time from the resi- original resolution, which was twenty twenty dash thirteen for outdoor dining. Greg, could you, uh, speak to that, please?
Uh, sure. Uh, recently I was at a, uh, meeting with, um, other municipal managers and, uh, they were, uh, letting everyone know that they were extending the, uh, the time for the outdoor dining. We had a, we, we had a, uh, resolution passed on June twenty third by this board for ninety days to allow restaurants to have outdoor dining. And that obviously would have, uh, expired in September twenty third, twenty twenty. Uh, the governor has extended the, uh, the, the stay, I'll say, and, and Neil, you could probably obviously hit this better than I can. But we're just asking to extend the, uh, the outdoor dining for, uh, another ninety days in accordance with what the governor has, uh, suggested, we'll say. Neil, if you wanna hit anything?
Yeah, the, uh, on November twenty fourth, the governor extended the disaster proclamation for another ninety days. So, uh, by extending this ordinance for another ninety days, we're in concert with, uh, the governor's most recent amendment, uh, to his original emergency proclamation.
Okay. Um, are there any questions from the supervisors?
No, I'd just like to comment that I think it's a fantastic idea, uh, to support our local restaurants and to encourage everybody to outdoor dining. Might be a little chilly this time of year, but it still exists and there's always takeout. Support your local restaurants.
Couldn't agree with Kath more. Do what we can to do to keep our business community as, um, vibrant as we can. Are there any more questions or comments from the supervisors? Any questions or comments from any member of the audience?
I'm not saying anything, Mr. Gray.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion?
Done, moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, now to, uh, the Divid, second year contact, contract addendum for the Delaware Valley Health Trust Agreement. Greg?
Yes, Divid is offering a, uh, for the first time, offering members, some members, um, an opportunity to, to lock in for two, or not lock in, but to sign a two-year agreement instead of a one-year agreement to, uh, renew, uh, the insurance, um, with the insurance trust, health, health insurance trust. Um, by doing so, they would, um, reduce our premium for twenty twenty one uh, by fifty four thousand three hundred and seventy nine dollars. Um, and then in twenty twenty two, they would, uh, put a max cap on any premium, uh, increases with up to six point five percent. So they, they wouldn't be able to exceed that. Um, and just to put everything in perspective, from twenty 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 to twenty twenty one, uh, we had, we actually had a zero percent increase, um, for the health trust. So, so that's good and and only eighteen percent of their members received a renewal of more than six percent in twenty twenty. So I think it would be, uh, beho- behoove ourselves to sign a two-year agreement, save fifty four thousand three seventy nine in premiums for twenty twenty one. And, uh, you know, we would work on the twenty twenty two premium adjustments on that side. So it's a two-year, we're basically signing a two-year contract with Divid.
Okay, now Craig, are you, you're on the board of Divid, is that right?
I'm on the board of the Health Trust with, which is what this is off, this offering is from, yes.
Could you explain to the audience what the Health Trust is and who its members are briefly?
The members are a hundred and eight municipalities that combine together to form a, um, a, a trust with health insurance. So it's all municipalities throughout, well, not just Pennsylvania, but in, uh, several, Delaware. Well, Delaware, I guess, is the only other state, but, um, and they put the trust together that way. It's, it is a trust. There is no, uh, you know, all the, a lot of the money comes back to the trust through, uh, premium contribution, or premium, uh, reductions and so forth, so. But it's all municipalities in this area, Pennsylvania and Delaware.
So it's, uh, it's a, uh, organization that's buying group insurance and put that a different way. Is that good characterization?
That would be a perfect.
Yeah, okay. Um, are there any, any members of the, of the Board of Supervisors that have any questions on this? Are there any members of the audience that have any questions on this? Now Craig, I'm assuming you need a vote to approve the contract amendment?
We definitely, we need a motion and I need, um, you to sign it as the chairman, yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept, accept the contract addendum?
Done, moved. One second.
Have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, motion passes, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the communication consultant, uh, to provide a communication strategy for Lower Gwinnett Township. So I'm gonna try to briefly summarize what this is. In, in, in the world of, uh, social media, in the world of, uh, very few newspapers, daily newspapers anymore, in the world of instant messages and, 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 uh, Twitter feeds and, uh, communication in general, the board decided it would be a good idea to go out and see if we could develop, uh, a master plan, a strategy document, or I shouldn't say document, it's a strategy approach. Um, what do we need to do in order to better communicate, uh, with the citizens of, of the township? We live in a, in a changing environment here. It's quickly changing. We gotta stay in touch with everybody by all the channels that are available and make sure that we're, we have our ear to the ground and that we listen to, uh, people that choose to communicate, uh, using one tool or another. And what do we need to do about that? And, uh, so this is, uh, more of a, of a, of a north star. This is the direction we're gonna take. There're gonna, there's gonna be many actions under this after we have a good understanding of what the community wants, what direction we need to take. Um, and, um, I, I, I don't know that we have a, uh, a game plan to do all of that or let out any other contracts to, to help us with our communication, whether that includes the better use of email, uh, upgrade of our website, how, all those things now that are now much more important in the lives of, uh, a, a lot of our citizens. Because, uh, in our interconnected world and especially with COVID today, people aren't leaving their houses and there, there aren't regular newspapers anymore for the most part, or dailies. So, so we, uh, requested an RFP, we got several, um, back and we interviewed two. Uh, both of these candidates were outstanding. But we need to pick one. And here we are tonight trying to make a decision on which one to pick. So are there any members of the supervisors who would like to talk, speak to one or the other?
I can speak. We, we did interview two. We interviewed, um, two very well-qualified candidates, but gave us different perspectives, in my opinion, as far as, um, what their deliverables, deliverables would be and what the, the comprehensiveness of the communication plan that they would deliver. So this, this proposal was strictly for the plan. And in the plan, we would like somebody to come in from, in my opinion, an outside view, look at our township, look at our, how we are communicating currently, look at the transparency and, um, kind of guide us as to what ways we can improve, what things we should adopt, um, and what areas we could strengthen, et cetera, et cetera. What that typically involves is an audit of what exists. Um, and that audit can be comprehensive or it can be very cursory. So you can go into depth as far as getting external stakeholder feedback, internal stakeholder feedback, which would be the staff and the supervisors. They can look at us holistically and see if we have a comprehensive plan that we're acting upon. If there's a strategic plan that we specifically are utilizing, maybe to address one area of weakness, like maybe enhancing our business district. They can talk about if there's any specific projects that we're looking to, um, amplify, like, you know, the Pike Fest would be an example. And what they do with that plan is give you very, very specific goals and very specific measurable action items that you can take in order to execute, um, a communication plan. And it's a working document, so it's only as good as the buy-in from the staff and the internal stakeholders and the buy-in from the external stakeholders, but it has to start inward. Um, so that reflective audit, you would want to be comprehensive, you would want it to be all-inclusive, and it's the guiding thing that could help us in actually executing strategic plans and comprehensive plans moving forward. So our communication is key. It's the cornerstone or even linchpin item that we wanna focus on so that when we move to other areas, we have this to fall back on. And it, it's specialized. So as Mark explained, both of the two, um, we interviewed Gailey and Murray and Communication Solutions Group. Um, either one of these individuals could give us an audit, but in my opinion, the most comprehensive presentation of a plan was given by Communication Solution Group. And I wanna be clear, because I know it's hard to separate out the different ideas. This is just for them to come in as an outside entity, look and, and be a communication expert in their field and look at what we're doing, look at how we are communicating, look at the ways that our, our residents wanna receive communication and what's most effective, what's not effective, and give us a plan as to how to do that. That's not for them to implement the plan. It's not for them to do anything beyond give us the communication plan. In my opinion, the, the most comprehensive plan that we could potentially get and have an outside vantage point, um, is Communication Solutions. And that is who I am in favor of us, um, allocating the RFP to.
Okay, and any other supervisors like to comment?
I'd like to mention the fact that, uh, we have you, Gailey, Murray Communications here, and Lower Gwinnett, we're very familiar with them. Uh, they have, uh, top references, uh, and they came through with what we asked them for. They have references like the Philadelphia, um, School District, Whitpaint Township, McAdo, and, uh, the PUC. They're well-established. We know who they are. We've worked with this individually before. And, um, with the price of eight thousand five hundred dollars less than, uh, Communication Solutions, I don't see, uh, that he hasn't met, Gailey's hasn't, hasn't met what we asked for. And, uh, eight thousand five hundred dollars is, is what it is. So.
Thank you.
That's what I would prefer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, is there any other comments for any of the other supervisors?
Um, I, I would just like to, um, build on what, um, Danielle, uh, described and say that, uh, my concern about hiring, um, Gailey Murray is that, uh, we will not make progress beyond where we are now if we're using them currently. And yet we still see a, uh, deficit in our communication with our, uh, fellow citizens and, uh, ways to improve that communication. I believe that the proposal put forward by Communication Solutions, uh, is, uh, is comprehensive and it will allow us to understand our current shortcomings and how we can, um, build on, uh, a new future, what we can do to improve communication, which is really, uh, an essential role, I think, of the township governance to make sure that we communicate effectively, uh, what we're doing and what, you know, collect also the residents' input, uh, for what we're doing. So I, I felt that the proposal with deliverables from the Communications Solutions Group, uh, was more along the lines of what, um, we're looking for in terms of a proposal.
Okay, Kath, do you have any comments?
Yeah, sure. Just to clarify, uh, Gailey's current role with Lower Gwinnett Township, they, my understanding anyway, is they are not, uh, in charge of full-blown communications with our citizen, citizenry and the businesses. They're limited to communications, uh, within the pandemic and as it relates to COVID information. So just to clarify that. And, um, as the chairman, uh, noted in his opening comments to this particular agenda item, um, they, both candidates are very qualified and I'm confident that we will get a fine product from either one of them. To be sure that the board is, uh, unanimous on the need for a communications plan and the, the critical nature of it and it being a worthy goal. But I'd also, uh, like to, um, acknowledge the fact that our two new supervisors, Supervisor McNeely and Supervisor Duckett specifically, ran on a communication strategy in their campaign. Um, and as you heard them say, they, they spoke rather passionately about their desire for, um, communication solution. So, um, I'd like to support them in their, what their campaign, what are the issues were and, uh, support the, um, contract for Communication Solution.
Thank you. Um, is there any member of the audience that would like to speak, uh, on this topic?
Yes, Mr., uh, Mr. Gray, I have, um, Deborah Schaefer that I'm gonna.
Please.
Yeah, hi, thank you for, um, allowing me the time to speak. This is Deborah Schaefer, Lower Gwinnett, uh, one-three committee person. I would just like to support, um, Kathleen and Tessie and Danielle in favor of, uh, a group that has not been involved with the, uh, township previously. I think that, uh, fresh eyes are really important to solving a problem that we've had for a while, that people are not, they're not getting as much information about what's going on in the township as possible. And I think that, I understand that this is just an audit, but I think that somebody, um, coming in from the outside could really, could really facilitate that, um, solution. So thank you for allowing me that time.
Thank you, Deborah. Craig, is there anybody else?
At, at this time, I do not see anything, anyone else, Mr. Gray.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion then for Communication Solutions?
I'd like to make the motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of Communications Consultants?
Aye.
Aye.
Solutions, okay, aye, all right.
I'll make it, I'll make it unanimous with an aye.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Ed.
How did you know Mark was gonna vote, Ed? Mark hadn't voted yet.
Well, well.
He, he's, uh, he's, he's playing it the right way. His, his vote's not needed yet.
Yep.
I thought it would be tonight, but it, it didn't work out, so, um, we already had a, a, a majority, so I wanted to make it unanimous from my end. Uh, you'd have to ask Mr. Gray.
I, I am, I am voting for Communication Solutions, yes. It is unanimous and, and I, I'd also like to, to speak up for Tom. So Tom has been outstanding. He's, he's unflappable and, uh, He's he's unflappable in a crisis situation. Um and I just want to make sure everybody in in the audience understands that this is a game plan, an audit. So there's gonna be a lot of execution that's gonna have to take place out of this uh in the communications area. And uh you know, Tom has done a a wonderful job in crisis communications, COVID communications. And years ago, before my time, he did the Pike Campaign, I liked the Pike. The board at that time hired him and I I I, from everything I understand, he did an outstanding job. So I suspect Tom, if if he wishes to, will continue to be a member of the Lower Gwinnett uh Communications Family in the future. Uh but we're awarding the uh contract to Communication Solution for fifteen thousand dollars. Thank you, everybody.
I second your sentiments, Mark.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, the Wisconsin Hickon Library reappointment of Lower Gwinnett Liaison, correct?
Yes, Wisconsin Valley Public Library is recommending and requesting that Mary Claghorn be reappointed. To her, to another three-year term for the uh the library board. Uh she uh served as treasurer and agreed to serve as the vice president. And they're just looking to reappoint her for another term.
Yeah, um yeah, Mary's been a fixture in the community for a long time, she's a great volunteer. Uh you know, the library is a is something near and dear to my heart, I love books. Can't, uh you know, I'm not commuting my long commute every day, so I'm not listening to uh books on tape or audible uh i- in the car anymore. Uh I try to do it on walks, but the lot, the library is just such a resource. And the new library, I don't know if you, anybody's been to it, uh that it just opened in Ambler. Um and the library primarily gets their funding from the school board. So uh there there's two libraries, one in Ambler and one on Route seventy-three, which is a uh Whitpaint. Lower Gwinnett does not have a a a library, I would, at some point, I'd like to have one if we can figure out how to fund that. Because I think the residents of Lower Gwinnett could benefit from that.
Mark, I'd like to comment on what you just said.
Go ahead.
When it's a, Lower Gwinnett does have a library, Winit Mercy College Library, I should say, Winit University Library is open to the public. Uh all those that live in Lower Gwinnett with a a library card can go to that library free of charge.
Um I I am aware of that, that is a university library, but yet, yes, you are right. Uh Lower Gwinnett residents can use that library. But it's it's a, you know, it's a little different than the resources that are available in either Ambler or up on uh Route seventy-three. But yes, you're right. And I've talked to the university about expanding that. Uh and uh I didn't get any takers yet, but it's something that I would like to see happen because I think everybody could benefit from it. And and uh.
Yeah.
The the university actually is well positioned to provide a service like that because of their skills in library science. So uh if you get an opportunity to uh uh talk to anybody from the university, uh it's always a good thing to to bring up. So uh can can I have a motion to appoint uh Mary to the library?
I just have a comment.
Sure, Kathy, please.
So Craig, this is technically an appointment by the library and they're asking us just to confirm or accept it. Is that correct?
Uh that's what I thought, uh although this letter says that the Board of Supervisors appoints two of the trustees, so.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion to appoint Mary Claghorn or reappoint.
Right.
I'd like to second that.
Thank you, is there any member of the audience uh that'd like to comment on uh the appointment? Okay, thank you.
I just want to make a comment, just to, just to thank, just to thank Ms. Claghorn for her um dedication to the Lower Gwinnett community. I know she's been honored previously, but she's apparently helped in the library's reconstruction and critical as being treasurer and finance in helping it. So I just wanted to thank her.
Duly noted, thank you. Uh we've had a motion, we've had a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you. Next up is authorization for advertisement of the environmental adva- our environmental advisory community ordinance. Now, um Neil, could you explain a little bit about the ordinance change you made? Greg, is Neil still on?
Sorry, I was muted.
He's muted.
So the Environmental Advisory Council was established in two thousand seventeen by ordinance. And um the ordinance did not strictly follow the state governing statute in two respects. Um one being um language that the council is advisory only. And is intended to coordinate its activities with the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, other township agencies. The second was that the original ordinance said that the chairperson of the EAC would be appointed by the EAC members. Uh the state statute says that the chairperson is appointed by the Board of Supervisors. So that needs to be uh cleaned up as well. So really just two minor changes in the ordinance uh to make it consistent with the state governing statute.
Okay, well, thank you very much, is uh any of the members of the board have any questions? Are there any questions from members of the audience?
Mark, this is Ree Monahan, Lower Gwinnett Township resident. Um I just want to make a notation that the um it's actually the Environmental Advisory Council ordinance, not committee ordinance. On the agenda, just moving forward, just to make sure that that's noted.
Okay, so so noted.
Thank you.
Right. All those in favor, we have a motion, I forgot where we are, we have a motion to accept the uh ordinance change.
We'll uh make a motion to authorize advertisement of the ordinance change.
Yes, I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, next up is Tree City, the uh EAC presentation. I think we have Ree and do we have Larry, is Larry in the audience still?
Yes, Larry's here.
Yes.
Okay, uh why don't we start with you, Ree, explain what this is all about and I'll let Larry talk about the details.
Absolutely, um again, I I want to provide just a very brief overview of how this discussion came about. And why it's before you tonight. Um so probably about five years ago, um I presented the Tree City USA program to the EAC. At the time, we had a lot of other programming taking place, so we didn't pursue this initiative. But over the years, it kept being presented and and probably about four months ago, I listed this item on the agenda. The EAC members delve into finding out what the requirements are, what the township is already undertaking to meet the requirements to be designated Tree City USA. So we've been discussing this over the last couple me um months, every meeting. Um there are four standards and I know Craig, Jamie, Mark, Larry, Mitch, Sandy and myself. We conducted a Zoom meeting to determine what ordinances we have in place. What we've, we've already been working on, what funding is allocated to meet some of the requirements, one of the four requirements. Um to be designated Tree City. So we determined that there is a lot of information, a lot of work already being done. Um I won't go into much detail, but we've met a lot of the requirements. And it's something that we're going to collectively work on together. I know Larry is heading this initiative, we've broken down numerous subcommittees, so I don't want to take away from Larry's presentation. But um I think this is a great way to meet, especially with the Wisconsin Clean Watershed Partnership, planting trees. It's a great way to reduce stormwater runoff, non-point source pollution, to receive municipal credit for TM-D, TMDL, which is total maximum daily load. And also the MS four requirements. And it's a feel-good, it's a great way to build community involvement and to have support and to beautify our area, our municipality. So um if anyone has any questions, otherwise I will turn this over to Larry.
Larry, thank you, Ree. Um Larry, introduce yourself if you'd be so kind.
There, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, uh my name's Larry Ray Dean, uh I am a associate member of the uh EAC. Because by statute, the EAC cannot have more than uh seven regular members, but the statute also uh lists something called an associate member. And there are now a few of those. I appreciate uh you taking the time out of your busy schedule and you can, it's obviously a lot of things that you're doing here to uh uh to allow me to come in and uh tell you a little bit about this proposal. First, here's what I thought I would do briefly, uh is a a bit of background about Arbor Day, a a little bit about the organization behind it. Which is uh called the uh Arbor Day Foundation. And then uh maybe a bit on the benefits of of becoming a tree city. And then the uh application process, which um whi- which is uh uh really key. Uh first, a a couple of words about the history of it. Um Arbor Day was um in fact uh one of the first days in the United States history. It was invented in um eighteen seventy-two, shortly after the US Civil War. It was invented by a uh truly odd character. And I don't want to describe it in too much detail, other than to say that uh he's one of the few people that got kicked out of the University of Michigan. Um if you can see the block M on my, on on my side here, you you'll see my little link to uh Michigan where I had my whole career. Uh but Ann Arbor, Michigan, has a lot of trees and he moved to Nebraska, which had no trees, nothing but grassland. And he was inspired uh by the lack of uh grassland to create this um Arbor Day, which he created. And it is uh it's 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 changed a lot since those those days. A hundred years later, uh it started over again. Uh it was the same Arbor Day, but it was an organization that was um much more um based in other other organizations. Like the United States Forestry Service, the Municipal League, um the State Foresters, the Association of uh Mayors. And so in nineteen seventy-two, it became a um a real organization. And uh it's 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 pretty big now, it's uh as an organization, it has about um thirty-five hundred um tree cities. Uh it's all over the world, actually, um yeah, and in many other um nations, uh they actually have a um a a tree, an Arbor Day. And so this kind of ties in, ties in with that. So uh the Arbor Day Foundation has an enormous number of corporate ties, um including our local uh Hershey Candy Company and Pico. Uh and various other entities that um have to do with forestry and so forth. They're very active when it comes to weather disasters, they come in and uh replant trees and do a lot of things. So uh from a point of view of a municipality like ours, uh the the picture is uh is of course much more uh local. And so uh without going into too much uh detail here, uh having a um having a healthy tree population in a municipality. Uh reduces costs uh for stormwater management. It um helps buildings uh cut energy production, it improves property values, uh certainly builds ties to community. And um uh and a lot of other advantages. There's, there's no application fees, by the way, to this, uh there's uh no member fees. A- and uh you don't get a lot of physical stuff from them, you get a flag, very nice flag, a plaque and two walls, two, two signs that would go on the roadway. Uh the main thing is though is that we would uh we would be together with another organization um that uh is seeking to uh improve the natural world, especially with regard to trees. So in terms of the application process, there's four uh four key steps. And uh I think the key steps are are actually pretty well-designed if you're gonna try to create new institutions across the United States and across the world. Uh the first step is um in an application, let's say that uh I were uh writing the application. One of the first things that I would have to do in the application is to identify a um a tree board. Now, that tree board could be a person, doesn't have to be a group, uh it could be the um EAC. Uh i- i- it could be, it could be any, any number, from the point of view for the Arbor Day Foundation, it could be any number of different uh entities. And so this is something that we would want to uh decide on. My thought is, is that uh we have an uh EAC that uh this, the Commonwealth of Philadelphia has gone a long way to to uh to already creating um a environmentally conscious uh aspect of municipal government. And uh and that would be a good place to put it, I think. Uh so the first thing is an organizational place that looks out for trees. The second thing is, is what they call a tree statute. Now, um uh I have looked now through uh the ordinances of of our fair city. And I have found uh about fifty-six, about forty-six pages, uh I used the word tree in the search and I found forty-six pages roughly of uh of tree stuff. Uh they're in three categories, there's tree protection, land development, and then there's zoning, and then there's municipal uh miscellaneous provisions, including the Park and Recreation Board. So uh so I I have um excised or copied, I didn't excise it, I I duplicated it into a single forty-six-page document. So that's the statute, the statute would change nothing uh from what we're already doing, there's no need to change it. It's uh it's remarkably full, it actually lists, you know, if you're looking to see whether quirkets, you know, oak trees are 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 listed, they're there and they're somewhere in the statute. So the statute is um is 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 robust, in my view. Uh so there's no, there's no, there's no more bureaucracy that we would be adding, uh there's no more restrictions, there's no, no request to, uh there's no requirement. Uh that isn't already in the statute. Now, of course, we're covered by uh both statutory law and case law, as every entity is, that's a corporate entity. Uh and uh we would have to follow the uh, you know, the various uh environments by uh by statute, by by state. So that's uh, that's the statute, no more bureaucracy uh than what we already have, no more restrictions. Third, um we have to, as a community, uh spend two dollars uh per per resident um annually on on trees. And it appears, uh since we have um eleven thousand five hundred uh uh citizens, uh that would make twenty-two thousand dollars and we are already spending that. So we've met that requirement. And then the um the fourth requirement, so uh we have an organizational place, we have a tree statute already in place. Um we have a a bu- a budget for forestry. The the fourth is a proclamation and a uh Arbor Day event. Now, uh this year, of course, because of coronavirus, uh many, many events were canceled as, a- and that is certainly the case with the Arbor Day celebrations. Our Arbor Dray, our Arbor Day, should should we do, should we enact this, our Arbor Day does not have to be on a single day. Uh national, the federal Arbor Day is uh is in mid-April. Uh and and uh part of the reason for that is it's, it depends on when you plant your trees. So in different parts of the world, the Arbor Day is on on different, different days. Um Israel has a holiday called Tuvishvat, which uh which is their uh tree day and it's on a, it's 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 in the fall. Anyway, um we could, if we wanted to, actually integrate the um Arbor Day with um with Pike Fest. Uh if I'm looking at the um at some of the, some of the things that they have combined it to, they have combined, they have suggested you could combine it with a craft fair. There's all kinds of things that that they would accept. And so in my, our application, uh what I, what I probably would put in there is uh is is that we would um. Uh we probably uh combine, if this was your, your wish, because it's, it's up to you, we would probably combine it with Pike Fest, which is uh of course in the fall. And um.
Larry, I want to stop you there. All right, you've told us what we can do and we we sound like we're already doing most of those things.
Yeah.
So the thing I'm most interested in, right, is uh citizen involvement, right? So protecting and growing our tree canopy, as you you know, because I've talked many times about this, is very important for many reasons. So protecting and growing our tree canopies, you know, because I've talked many times about this, is very important for many reasons, right? Our birds, our, the wildlife, the water runoff. I'd, I'd like you to, if, if this gets approved tonight, we have to, we need some more, more boots on the ground. We need, we need trees being planted. We need educational outreach to, to citizens. And a lot of citizens look at this, and it's very explainable. It's very, it's concrete.
Right.
And so you'd be in charge of that under the EAC umbrella. Are you okay with doing all that work?
Yeah. How much am I getting paid now, you're saying?
About the rest of the volunteers.
Yeah, right, right. Absolutely, absolutely.
So, so you're okay with leading this up underneath the EAC umbrella?
Yeah. I think, I think it's a good idea.
All right. So you can work with staff on the application and keep us posted?
Right.
Okay. I think that's all we need. Does any, any members of the Board of Supervisors have any questions, Larry or Ree, about this?
I respect, I, I was under the impression this was just a presentation, that we weren't actually going to vote to adopt to become a Tree City, and I respect, respectfully request that the vote be deferred until at least the next, the next meeting or maybe the second one in January, because I, I really haven't done my own research and questioning. He gave us a lot of, you, Larry gave us a lot of information. I just was not prepared to make a vote this evening, and I don't see any rush in getting this done. So I hope that you entertain my request.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We, we can table this. I just wanted to get this out as soon as we can. We've talked about it in the EAC long enough. And I think you can proceed with the application and the support of the Board of Supervisors. And we can table this until sometime in the first quarter, or January preferably, but certainly first quarter. And you can get your ducks lined up, and we can meet again on this subject, so we can vote as to whether or not we wanted to, wanted to have a Tree City.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Oh, absolutely.
Um, thank you, Larry, for that presentation and for all, all of that information. I found it very informative. I did, I did do a bit of research into Tree City. And just from what I was able to peruse from EAC, it looked like we were meeting, or we have almost everything related to, to what their requirements are, except for maybe the annual distribution or the, the tree, you know, the Arbor Day celebration and the giving away of the trees.
Right.
Which I thought we had planned for last year with COVID. So is there anything else outside of, or anything outstanding or anything glaring that we are not adhering to that would preclude us or that we would need to step up and meet Tree City's requirements? And beyond what the EAC does and starts the application, is our approval just merely ceremonial? Can EAC make a decision to, to be a participant in Tree City without our, our approval?
Who are you asking that of?
You, Mark, anybody from the EAC that wants to come forward and share?
Well, I can, I can speak to, to your questions. It would have to be designated municipal organization or requirement. The EAC can certainly be the board and spearhead the initiative, but it must come from the municipality. And the EAC, and of course, as Larry had mentioned with COVID, we haven't been able to conduct our tree giveaways, but we typically have two per year. And we give away native trees, native plugs, plant plugs. So that's something that is very easy and that's in our wheelhouse that we could certainly conduct moving forward. I think the only other thing was a tree care ordinance, but we have so many documented in our zoning and SADO ordinance. We have so many requirements that we've already met the requirements for Tree City. So I don't think it would preclude us from
We would have, there's no resolution ordinance that we would need to pass in a statute related to your guidelines as, as far as being a part of Tree City. We're essentially already doing it. It's just a formality to announce that
A formality, correct.
We're officially a part of it.
We need an ordinance for spending the money, the $2 per resident. We have to, and a resident, we have to put that in an ordinance so that every year, whoever's putting the budget together is going to put that money aside. So that's what we need in ordinance.
So it's per resident, every resident that lives within the township, you have to, regardless of age?
Correct.
So
Yes.
Ree, if, if we're already giving away trees and we already have met the requirements of being a Tree City, what is it that we're going to improve on by having this designation?
Well, typically, what the EAC, we give away trees and native plants and shrubs to residents. Tree City is for public grounds, so that's more of a municipal-based program. So it would help us to improve our park areas, and I know Mitch and Sandy are phenomenal. They do such amazing work, and they keep up on all of the activities, everything. If a tree's injured or down, they make sure that the safe, safety of the residents comes first. But this program is geared toward municipalities versus what the EAC has typically done in the past, which is residential-based.
So does, does the board, the tree board, what kind of decision-making do they, do they do? Do they, for example, typically Mitch and/or Sandy will identify a tree that might need trimming or taking down or whatever? Is that kind of decision-making taken out of their hands and put it in with the board?
No, no, I, I don't, I, I don't think that, 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 let, let me, let me back up, because there's now several questions on the floor. I, I don't want to do anything without the Board of Supervisors' approval. And so when it comes to writing up the application, which is sort of half-written up already, what I do is I send it to you. I don't know, for approval, I guess. And, and every step of the way, I would think that if there were steps, aren't very many steps, but every step of the way, I would want, want the, want the BA, the Board of Supervisors to, to weigh in on it. So when the applicant, before the application goes in, you all would have a, have an opportunity to, to, to change it. Second, the second issue is, are, are roles transformed? And I, I don't think they would be. The Arbor Day Foundation is, you know, it's a membership organization. It wants to grow. It wants, it's got 112 municipalities in Pennsylvania and 3,500 throughout the United States. And as a membership organization, the more members that it has, the more clout it can deliver when it comes to federal legislation and this sort of thing. So they're not going to, they're not going, they're not going to force us or any municipality to change what it's doing particularly. They just want to focus attention on trees. So I don't, I don't see, so Kathleen, your, your comment about whether or not it would change the responsibilities, you would, you, the Board of Supervisors, would be the only ones that would be changing responsibilities. You know, they're, they're not going to come back to us and say, you know, you haven't properly divided up the, for example, some of these, some of these entities will, will do a tree survey. You know, they'll, they'll count what kinds of species are out there, what needs repair, that sort of thing. We could do that, and a lot of Tree Cities do do that, but we don't have to do that. We don't have to do anything other than what we're doing.
Quick, and, and to your point, Larry, too, we made it quite clear that we do not want to place any additional burden on staff. We don't want to make it so that they have additional work to do, given their tight schedule and how much work they already have. So it's just kind of incorporating what's already taking place and wrapping it into that application process.
Right. And, and to Tess, to Tessie's point, what is the benefit of this? If you have a municipality like ours that's already, you know, deeply into its own natural environment, that, that is into trees, into natural areas walks in the woods and that sort of thing. It, it's not, it's, I don't think it's going to make us very different. I think what this does is it gets us together with, with other, other municipalities. I, I noticed that there are a lot more, not a lot, there are more uppers than lowers when I look at the 112 municipalities. And, and, you know, I think we should take our place with the, with the lowers, you know, increase their numbers. So this is an association that is, is, I think it's part of the, the growing movement toward looking at issues of climate and so on. I, I do want to say one other thing, and that is, I, I'd like, I'd like Neil to also look over my, my application, maybe before I would present it to the board again, if, if you could do that.
Sure.
Because, you know, I, I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to be making changes unintentionally.
Right.
Yeah. So other than the relevant ordinances that are already on our books, does this designation or anything within it limit or otherwise restrict the residents' use and enjoyment of their property?
Well, that's already in the, in the statutes.
Well, I said on top of that, is there
On top of that, on top of that.
Okay.
No, they don't, we're talking about a Nebraska organization, and they are, you know, they're not a policing organization. They're not going to come out and say, geez, you guys got an awful lot of sick trees and to be taken down. They're not going to do that. That's not their nature.
No, I mean, their mission, their mission is primarily conservation and education.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And they, they, they work, by the way, if you look at their major donors, Boise Cascade, a variety of, of, and Charmin, I might add Charmin. Be great to have Charmin on our side. Anyway, they, these, these entities that use a lot of pulp, they, 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 they work with to try to reduce their footprint. And so they're, they're not like, they're not like going to, to say to, I don't know, Target Stores, which is one of their big allies. You know, we, we want you to stop using cardboard. They're not going to do that. What they're going to do is they're going to provide consultancies for these entities that want it.
And are there any more questions from the supervisors?
I have just one more. So thank you very much for the presentation. I, I actually come at this from a different viewpoint, wondering how it is that we can go beyond what we're doing now in a big way in terms of planting trees. And so what I'm not hearing is that even though this brings a little bit more budget to the, the process of purchasing trees, I'd like to know more about how we can involve the community more heavily with planting trees and have more of a positive long-term effect on our community by
That's a wonderful question.
replacing our tree canvas, canopy, sorry.
Right. That's a wonderful question. And if, if one looks at the Arbor Day Foundation website, I mentioned Target Stores. What Target Stores did is they somehow got their employees to get excited about planting trees. And I don't know, I think they planted like 80,000 trees. The employees did, not the corporation. And so sometimes you can do this through some kind of community entity that already exists, you know, a church, a corporation. You know, there's, there's a variety of ways to, to involve people. You, you, you all were talking earlier about, to me, a very, very interesting proposal with this community thing. There's a, there's a book out just now, well-known, a couple of years ago, by Michael Lewis, which talks about government's failure to put its story forward. All these great, great people working in government and, and, and people, I will still say things, you know, like, what are the three biggest lies and stuff like that? And to be able to highlight, you know, what, what, what a community does, what government does is, 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 seems like a really, really good thing to do. And, and I think this Tree City thing would, would be a part of that.
Tessie, too, there are other grants specifically geared for, toward community involvement, such as Tree Vitalize. And there are additional grants, and the one name escapes me, but it's for residential properties. I know Ambler has taken advantage of this program, and they've worked with a lot of their residents, and it's been very successful. And I think I've been in touch with Mary Margaret, who's the Chair of the Amber EAC, which you probably know, whom you probably know. And she could speak more to this, too. She, we've been communicating, and she did provide guidelines as to what they have done, but I, I think there are greater opportunities, to your point, Tessie.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I think that answers my question. I was a little bit concerned that if we did this Tree City, that, that might preclude doing additional activities. And it, it sounds like that's not the case. Maybe this is sort of
What are the additional activities that you're concerned about? That it would eclipse.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Hello? Okay, go ahead, Larry.
I, I'm interested in what your concern is.
Well, I don't want us to stop with Tree City and just say, you know, this is our, this is what we're doing for Lower Gwinnett, and this is enough, and, and so forth.
I get it.
So I, I look now at this as being sort of a stepping stone, you know, it's a piece that we can build on and bring more awareness to the community of how important this is.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yeah, while you're talking about the EAC, Tessie, they don't stop.
Yeah, they were the Energizer bunnies, right?
And it's good, that a great example. And then, absolutely. I agree. Good, good point, Tessie.
Okay. Is there any member of the audience or anybody else have any questions on this issue?
No. I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, Ed, we can hear you.
I think we should wrap this up and and continue with further discussion if need be, either the January or February meeting.
Well, we're, we're done, Ed.
Okay.
We're done. We have, we
I was disconnected and I lost you at the end. I, I heard the, our Michigan alumnus.
No, he was kicked out.
Okay, Doctor.
Thank you.
I think that's it for everything else on the agenda, except for the manager's report. Mr. Manager?
Yes, just, this is officially the last meeting of the year, so it's been a strange year, but we got, looks like we're going to get through it. And just want to thank everyone for their help with the budget. And to give my condolences to Jamie Warman, who lost her father over the weekend. So that's why she is not with us tonight. So just want to give my condolences over to her.
Thank you very much. Being that all of our business on the agenda is concluded, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Bye.